Good evening and welcome to the Town of Cortumadera Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Will you please call the roll, Mr. Roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo?
Here.
That's great, thank you. At this point in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something to say, you have three minutes to do so. You can also email publiccomment@tcnmail.org if you so choose, or there is an option on the screen for a chat button to be pressed. So raise your hand, chat, or email if you have public comment.
Yeah, just while you are, Tracy, maybe checking some of the email links, I wanted to take a moment just to introduce Chris Ragland, our new building official who started last Monday. He's on the screen here. So Chris, if you can say hello and raise your hand.
Hello.
We are thrilled to welcome Chris to the team and I've been really impressed with just his demeanor and how he approaches problem solving and his values that he's placed on really customer service and working in lockstep with our community values and our community in all affairs of with construction and building. So Chris comes to us by way of Oregon and I don't know if you want to say a couple of opening or remarks, Chris, but you'll be seeing him in the future and I look forward to actually bringing him to planning commission meetings in the in the future and just having Chris sort of being here and acknowledging sort of the his interest in in the planning commission, I think is already a good step in the right direction. So I appreciate you coming, Chris, and saying hello to our commission.
And could I just jump in for a second and publicly congratulate Tracy on her promotion to assistant planner? I think we all can appreciate how hard Tracy works and what a great asset she is to Cortumadera.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Thank you for allowing me to interject there and thank you Commissioner Bendel for that remarks there.
Absolutely, yes. So Tracy, now that you're doing several things at once, have you seen any raised hands or public comment?
I haven't. Let me recheck the email. Nothing through email, no raised hands, and I don't see anything in our Q and A or chat.
All right. So we'll close public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda and we'll move directly down our agenda to the consent calendar. Tonight, there is a adoption of a resolution pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, making findings and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the planning commission pursuant to the director of the town council and Brown Act provisions. That said,
I will make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
We can't quite do that, but we will take that under, hold that in advance while we see if any member of the commission wants to either pull that or discuss it. Does anybody want to have anything to say about this resolution on the commission? Okay, hearing none and seeing no vertically shaking heads, we'll go on and ask for public comment on this item. So if you have some public comment about this procedural motion that we need to adopt, please raise your hand and/or email at tcmail, publiccomment@tcnmail.org. So.
I don't see any hands raised, Chair Chase, nor is there any email that's been sent.
Okay, that's great. So we can then close the public comment on this consent item, take it back, and we can take under advisement Thor's motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay, Bob.
Do we have to call the roll?
Sure.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalf?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Thank you. Shall we move on to new hearings? So tonight we have two hearings. One is 113 Golden Hind Passage and the second is 15 Deer Run. We're going to take up 113 Golden Hind Passage first. In this particular case, Dr. Bundy has an announcement to make.
I need to recuse myself because I'm within 300 feet of the project. I will mute myself and remove myself from video.
Okay. So we'll see Dr. Bundy when we get to item two, which is 15 Deer Run. So we are four commissioners in attendance for this item. This item is a design review application for a 678 square foot second level addition, 139 square foot first level addition, and modifications to an existing single-story home at 115 Golden Hind Passage. And Mr. Boyle has taken over the screen and.
Thank you Chairman Chase, members of the planning commission, and members of the public. Did want to note, I'm sure Tracy caught it, we have the chat on and I just saw a chat message from someone in the public regarding this project. So may just be aware of that. I don't think we've had the chat before, but that's that's with us today. So thank you again. This is a designer review application for a second story addition to a single-family home, single-level, single-family home at 113 Golden Hind Passage. Right, this is a visual of the front elevation, of course. Let me just move, if I could just hold on one second. Need to get my dog out of my room. Sorry, not that. Okay, 113 Golden Hind Passage is located here in Mariner Cove neighborhood. And very, it's, there's an arm of Cortumadera, sorry, San Clemente Creek that stretches out into the backyard. This is a proposed site plan for the project. The, the, there's only minor changes to the exterior of the building. The, the front portion of the building will be moving towards the street. And I'll show you that in more detail, that it, that front addition is a single-level addition. And the second level addition is shown in dashed, this area here, more or less centered over the building. And the proposal is to also modify the lower level, like often happens with these additions. Here you have the existing floor plan, you have the garage and the great room, three bedrooms and, and two baths. The house is pretty much original from the way it was built. The modifications to the lower level will include, you know, expansion and kind of opening up the great room even more by eliminating the center fireplace, adding to the deck onto the back. The two bedrooms here will remain the same, the bathrooms will remain the same, and this bedroom here will be converted into the stair and the laundry room. And then this, this exterior wall, as I mentioned before, will be brought approximately 10 feet towards the street, and that room will become, become a family room. So those are the modifications to the first level of the home. The second level, like I said before, is, is more or less centered on the building. You have a stairway to the left, bringing you up, an office with the closet, the master bath and the master bedroom, and then a closet to, walk-in closet to the right. And the, the second level addition is, is brought into all sides of the building, except for the northern side, where, you know, the existing northern wall is extended up for that small area, for that stairway. Every other part of the addition is brought in from the exterior of exterior walls. I'm, I'm kind of going to talk about this in the sort of three, the three parts of this project or three phases, I should say, actually, one more time, three revisions. Once, so this one in the middle is the original version, which we see today. This version here is what was originally proposed by the applicant. And then this version here in the lower right is the revision that was done after consultation with the neighbors. And I'll talk about that in more detail in a moment. And the, the red circles and the green circles is just showing areas that changed from, from version one to version two. But as you can see, generally speaking, again, the, the second level over the, over the main house and step back from, from the street. Again, so that was the front elevation. This is the rear elevation or the east elevation. This will come into play again as I go on in terms of impacts to neighbors. The original house as it is today, a version one and version two, and again, the two, the, the green and red circle is showing how the various versions. And the, the side, the north side elevation, existing version one, version two, a version two squished down quite a bit and reduced the amount of, of area on the north side. I'll show that, yeah. South side, a smaller change. It was. The, the south side was also slightly reduced, the distance, the width of the south side, second level addition was reduced. This window was slightly reduced and also the, the distance of this wall was, was pushed up, was pushed up more towards the center of the building as well. And again, that had a positive impact on, on view impacts. In terms of that, the project summary, I'll just give an overview. The floor ratio is increasing, of course, with the secondary addition, it's still below the maximum, which is 41.9%. Lot coverage is slightly increasing, and that's that first level addition being bought out towards the street. Front setback is changing, and I think that's actually an error in my staff report. I don't think I, I've mentioned that, I think I said it didn't change, but again, front is obviously coming. And I've got that backwards. It should be, it should be 39 feet existing and, and 29 feet front setback. Sorry for that. The size setbacks and the rear setbacks does not change. The height is going from 16 feet 8 inches to 23 feet 9 inches. Code is 30 feet. And there's no change to the proposed parking layout and the parking situation is to, to covered parking spaces in the garage. In terms of neighborhood outreach, initially, when the parkers, they're, the property owners submitted their application, with their application, they had seven letters of support from the neighbors. After some consultation, then after the initial story polls went up, there were concerns from the neighbors across San Clemente Creek, which I showed the folks at 151, 147, and 139, all expressed concern regarding the impact of the project to their view of, the views of Mount Tam. The park, we, we had a Zoom meeting. The applicants, the neighbors, and myself, and the applicant's architect, of course, and had a discussion, lengthy discussion, and the applicants agreed to delay the going to the planning commission, and you probably recall, you received a notice and then you, shortly after you received a notice of cancellation, the parkers wanted to work with the neighbors and wanted to come up with a solution that would work for all. They had consultation from another architect that was recommended by one of the neighbors across the creek. And through that collaboration, they came up with a redesign, which is again, what you saw many times on their design number two, which came, which was supported by two of the three neighbors. And one of, one of the three neighbors still has some concern, that's the folks at 147 Golden Hind Passage. And I believe she is on the call, and so we'll probably, we'll hear from her concerns. And you've also seen her concerns expressed in the packet via email. And in addition to that, the neighbor across the street at the 110 Golden Hind Passage has had concerns regarding privacy since the beginning. We engaged with her many times and talked, talked through those concerns, as you see in the staff report I provided, visited her property, took photos, and and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail as well. Talk about her, her concerns, I should say. And just a visual of the project site and the neighborhood responses, I'll call them. The yellow rectangle is the project site. The blue stars, four on this side, three on this side, are the seven neighbors that provided letters of support. The, the black circle is, is a neighbor that we haven't heard from, chose not to respond. And then next, the green triangles are the folks who engaged with us and through the process and the redesign have provided letters of support on the project. And then the red rectangles are the neighbor across the street, 110, concerned about privacy, and across the creek, 147, who still has some concerns regarding view impacts. In terms of, you know, assessing the viewing impacts, as done every time, staff took pictures from the, in this case, the backyards of the homes across the creek, following the town guidelines that we have established and, and work with. Again, the intention of the revised design was to reduce impact to neighbors across the creek. And I did want to point out that, that the revised design both reduces the width of the addition mainly on the north side, which you'll see, but it also does slightly reduce the width of the building on the south side. So basically, it's just taking, taking the addition and squishing it into the middle of the building on both sides, more in the north than the south, resulting in, you know, an improved view in most people's opinion to the neighbors across the creek. So again, this, this just highlights those areas, and we'll start with, with the red. Again, the original design had the master bath over here, and so, you know, a good piece of the building was here. After working with the neighbors and the other architect, the project architect moved that master bath to here, and so that's that area here, and this is just the stair. So it's a much smaller element, and, you know, there's your, there's your reduction in roof impact, blocking one's view of Mount Tam. Mount Tam, as you'll see in the photos, is directly, you know, on the other side of, of the red circle, depending upon, you know, what angle you're viewing the property from. And the green circle is showing that the very small increase, I believe it's about two feet, that, that wall was brought in to, to the center of the building, and so giving, making a little bit larger window or, or view corridor for neighbors to see Mount Tam from south side of the building. So this is a view from the back fence of 149 Golden Hind Passage, which is the property and, and the owner who had, still has some concerns regarding her view. And again, I just point out how in, in the story polls are, are indicated, some of the story polls are indicated with the yellow arrows showing where, where those will come and, and where they would, would block the view. So this is a view right up to the, the rear fence. And then the next view, next photograph is taken from about midpoint in the backyard. There's this arbor, of course, there. And then the next shot is far left of the, or, or the south side of the yard, again, looking towards Tam. And then at this point, you know, the, the project is, is over here, yellow arrow is indicating where the story polls are. And Mount Tam again is over here. And then lastly, this is taken from right up against the house, so if you walk out sliding glass door and access their deck, this is the view you have. Again, story polls over here in yellow, Mount Tam in the center. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the, the privacy impact that was expressed from the, the resident across the street at 110 Golden Hind Passage, visited her property, took photos from the front office. So basically, two, two windows that face the, face Golden Hind Passage and face the project, one is an office, one is a bedroom. And these are pictures from the office, one standing behind the office desk, the other one standing in front of the office desk. Story polls here to the right and story polls here tucked away to, in the left behind the tree. And then next, also again, from, from the same, the same property, here is the, the front, and the front bedroom, and then, and then here's from, from, from the front bedroom window. I'm sorry, this, this is, let me double check, I think I may have got, yes, I apologize, I put in the wrong slide. Disregard this one. This is the, the view from, from the front bedroom, viewing straight out to the, the property at 113 Golden Hind. And again, these, just for clarity, these story polls, I, when I took these pictures quite early on in the process, these are the old story polls. So they're, they're not, they're not the new ones, didn't want to, and had difficulty reconnecting with, with some of the neighbors to go out again. But as I showed in that front elevation, the impact, and I'll show a little bit more, the impact of the revised project actually reduces, in my opinion, the privacy impacts to, to 110 Golden Hind, which you can see here. So project design number one, design number two, reduction of this window altogether, the removal of this window because the master bath goes away. And so, so that privacy impact is, is removed, and then the small change in, in the window from version one to version two, and just for, this window in both cases is a closet window. So again, north window eliminated and window of garage closet is slightly reduced in size. Excuse me. So with that, staff is, you know, going through all the findings in terms of natural light, privacy, and, and view, even though there are still some impacts that staff recognizes mainly to the one resident across the creek, staff does not feel that that is a significant impact that would dictate or result in staff not being able to make the findings. So staff is able to make all the designer review findings and recommends that the planning commission approve the draft resolution with the attached conditions, which is attached to your packet. And that concludes my report. I have the, the findings here, of course, if you want to discuss any of those, and the applicant's, and the applicant's architect, as well as, I know at least one of the neighbors is present at the, here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Boyle. At this point, then, we will ask for the applicant to make their presentation. And after we get through that portion of it, we will ask for the public comment on this item. So that said, who's going to start out speaking?
I will start.
Okay.
My name is Maureen Jelkam. I'm the architect on the project. The parkers approached me to design in addition to their house because they needed more space for their family. Initially, we looked at a single-story solution, but we realized with the amount of space they needed, it was going to take too much of their site. I know it's mentioned in the staff report, their site is undersized at 7,200 square feet, where the, the standard for an R1 lot is 7,500. So we decided to go with a second story solution. So it's a challenge to design a second floor on an existing house. The, the first obstacle is finding a location for the stair that doesn't completely disrupt the existing floor plan. And then, you know, you have massing issues, you want to make sure it relates to the existing house. We've got the, the issues of privacy and sun shading on adjacent properties. And in this particular case, we also have a view of Tam over our house for the neighbors on the east side of the creek. So my approach to designing the second floor was to minimize, to keep the ridge height as low as possible. And how I did that is I kept the eight-foot plate height downstairs. I made the second floor plate height also eight feet. And then I minimized the depth front to back of the addition to 138 to keep the ridge as low as possible. All the second floor roofs, all the second floor roofs, I apologize, are hips to minimize the mass. I, like, like Phil mentioned, I've stepped back all the walls in, in most of the locations, except for at the stairwell, where I needed to use that, that space. So once my initial design was complete, the parkers approached the neighbors and actually got support from several of the neighbors, including the two adjacent neighbors. But once they really couldn't reach out or tried to reach out, but couldn't connect with the neighbors on the other side of the creek. But once the story polls were up, they understood the project, I guess, and had some negative reactions. Three of the neighbors showed some concern, and two of them were, were impacted by the second floor and their view of Tam. So my initial design, in my opinion, impacted the Mount Tam view of 151, which is the house directly opposite the, our site, and to a lesser degree, the impact of the view of 147. After Phil kind of went over the process, but after a Zoom meeting, a site meeting, so I could see for myself what the conditions were, and then a face-to-face meeting with a consulting architect, I realized how the plan could be altered to improve the view corridor for 151 mainly, because I felt like she was the one that mainly, that was mainly impacted. And if you look at the photographs, it seems like Mount Tam is basically in the middle between, for one of the properties, between 113 and the property to this, to the north, and for 147, it's basically between our property and the property to the south. So what I did was I redesigned the stair. And the main, the main thing I did was reduce the, excuse me, let me cancel this, reduce the roof line. And what that allowed me to do was to maintain a view corridor for 151. And after, it was very helpful to have this consulting architect let me know and explain to 151 how we could create a view corridor that she could live with, and I'm happy to say that she no longer opposes the project. So my modifications have kept her happy, and she now won't, doesn't oppose the project. With the redesign of the second floor, I relocated the master bath to the back of the house. I also was able to move the south wall, like Phil mentioned, but I only moved it a foot closer, I mean, farther away from the south first floor wall, but I also reduced the overall depth of the second floor by two feet, three inches. And the view from 147, especially the view that you see from the back deck, it looks like the peak of Tam is basically right between the two properties. And so any reduction of width of the second floor, as well as reduction of the depth, increases that view corridor that she has of Mount Tam. Let's see. I, I understand there were some privacy concerns raised by the neighbor across the street. I just want to, I did move the bath to the back, so that's one less window that she has to deal with. But I just want to point out that the windows that we have that are basically, basically facing the street right away are over 120 feet from her bedroom window that she is concerned about. So it seems to me like there's a pretty great distance to have privacy concerns. So just to kind of summarize, I think it was a very helpful process to get the input from the neighbors and from this consulting architect, and we were able to come up with a solution that not only solved my client's needs, but also mitigated most of the view issues for the project. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think that we will now ask for the parkers if they want to make a statement. And then we'll ask commissioners if they have any questions for you. So, Parker, you are on.
Perfect, thank you. So good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Parker. This is my wife Amanda. We're the current owners of the 113 Golden Hind Passage. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the commission for the opportunity to present. We've been here in the neighborhood for about eight years. We love being here. We've been here in the neighborhood for about eight years. We love being here. We love this neighborhood. We love the community. We also have two rapidly growing children. So Zoe, who's twelve and Zach, who is nine. In addition to two over eager dogs, so apologies if we have to step away to help the dogs or the kids during this call. We are proposing this project for a few different reasons. So one is to add space for the overall family. Our home is a little bit over thirteen hundred square feet without the garage. And quite frankly, we're running out of space as the kids get older. So we did want to add on and and create some separation for the family. Second, we also wanted to get our home above the flood zone where we are located. We're right up the back of the creek. We typically experience flooding in both the front and the backyards during heavy storms and and high tides. And I kind of joke, but it's not uncommon to see our kids paddle boarding in the backyard during the really big storms. And third, we really wanted to allow and think about just new working environment. So both Amanda and I have jobs where we will now be working from home for a portion of the time. And that's a new change for our family as we try and think about space and how we make the most of the house. So we've been working with Maureen for a little over a year here on the the project. We've definitely evaluated a ton, what seems like a ton of different executions. And we tried as best as we could to be as flexible as we could. We wanted to listen to our neighbors and work with our neighbors on any potential concerns. So I feel like just the the meeting we had with them, I think, was incredibly productive. And that allowed us to to postpone the project to come up with some changes and ultimately make a a new revision based on the feedback we receive. I really, really wanted to thank Phil for all of his help in guiding us through the process or facilitating interactions and discussions with our neighbors. Certainly want to thank Maureen for her creativity and flexibility and and all of her help and guidance. But mostly, I think I really wanted to thank the neighbors who shared their concerns very openly and honestly. But most of all, because they approached the project with solutions and how to find ideas of how to compromise together. So I think that's that ends my remarks, but thank you again for your time.
Okay, well, thank you. So at this point, I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant or for staff. I'll start with you, Mr. Rizzo. Do you have any questions for these folks?
Sorry, let me unmute. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Bunny is not here. Commissioner Vandell, do you have any question?
Um, I wonder if Phil, I could just see the pictures again of the that from the neighbor's yard that feels that the view would be impacted.
Certainly can. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
So that the neighbor is at one forty seven, still has some concerns. And again, this is three photos from her yard and drive four. This is the closest one next to the fence. Secondly, about midpoint backyard, center of the backyard with the arbor. The project is is down here. Third, on the south side of her yard, project to the right, Mount Tam visible straight ahead. And then lastly, center of the yard, very close to to the house, right at the sliding glass door.
So which is which is the view that's so has the most blockage?
The most blockage. Well, I guess, I guess, in my, in my opinion, if I was to in terms of these four pictures. In my opinion, this one, but even her opinion may be different. But in my opinion, this is the view that is blocked most by the project.
And is that a one story house that she has or a two story?
I'm I'm ninety percent sure it is is a one story house.
Okay, that's what I thought. I I went by there, but it was so foggy. I couldn't see anything. Thank you. That answers my question.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Metcalf, do you have any questions for the staff or for the applicant?
None at this time.
Okay. All right. So at this point, what we will do is go to public comment for this item. And I'm sure there's going to be some contributors to this. So we will open it. You have three minutes to make a comment. I have in front of me a three minute timer, which will probably chime in the background as we approach the three minute mark. So we'll start with you, Tracy, and hands raised if there are any or any emails.
There are. There is a hand raised. I'll start with Christopher H. I've allowed you to talk. You will need to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christopher Heston. I live at one oh five Golden High. I just like the stamina and support of the Parkers in this endeavor that they've taken on during COVID. I think it's brave of them to get this done and they need to raise their house because of the flood issues. And while they're doing that to go up another story to expand for their growth, their large family and growing children is important. I think this entire neighborhood is all going to end up raising the houses up. In the process, most of us will probably add another floor as well. So any temporary inconvenience to the neighbors will probably be alleviated in future time when they go up as well. It's only it's gonna happen. Water levels are rising, so houses are gonna have to go up. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher.
I see Mark Hewlett has a hand raised. Go ahead, Mark. You want to unmute yourself?
Yeah, hi, I just quickly want to say that I I'm right next door on the north side of the Parker's house and we fully support their project. They're a great family. We our lives have been enhanced by having them as neighbors and I think they've taken a great amount of care to make sure to mitigate any problems that have been brought forth. And it's it's I I do as their neighbor on the north side, fully support their project.
Thank you very much. Okay. So there is a chat. Would you care to read the chats, Tracy?
Sure. This individual already spoke.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the first chat. It's and the second. Not sure if Ms. Wexler wishes to speak, or she'd like me to to read her comments. I'll give her a chance to raise her hand if you like, Peter.
Yes.
Go ahead and check email while we we she's saying she doesn't need to speak. So I'll read that. Thank you. This is Wexler. She stated, just want to put on record, I oppose the second story addition because it reduces my primary view of beautiful Mount Tamalpais. I understand the need for more interior space for the Parker family. I would prefer them to build a one story addition. That's from Hermione Wexler.
And she must be one forty seven. Is that fair to say, Phil?
Yes, that's correct, one forty seven.
Right. All right. And there's nobody else raising a hand or emailing.
And let me check junk email here. I don't see any emails. No additional raised hands and no other written comment here within the Zoom.
Okay. So I think your summary chart, Phil, explains it pretty well. That there's the two parties who are in still in opposition to the project. So that said, we'll close public comment. See it up. Is there there's a Q and A here now?
It's a question maybe for Phil or the applicants. If you'd like me to read it.
Yes.
Says it's it doesn't say who it's from. It says, how does the second story help the flooding issue?
Not related. But you go ahead, Mr. Boyle.
Yeah, I can certainly, you know, like, like we've said, the the project is going to meet the flooding flood requirements and elevation requirements by FEMA and kind of quarter Madera. By doing so, I don't think it changes the flooding issue for quarter Madera. It just protects this property.
Right, okay. Okay, so we're closing public comment. And we will go into consideration of this project by the commissioners. So at this time, then we have four of us that will review this project. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Vandell.
I was most concerned about the view issue, which, you know, Mount Tam is is a the big deal about living in quarter Madera. And I think that it's it's pretty amazing that everybody worked together and found a solution. I feel a little hesitant saying, but I can't really see the impact on one forty seven from the the pictures that Phil took. I don't see that it's significant because there are still a number of clear views of Mount Tam. It just seems from that one spot, it's bottom part of it is impacted, but not certainly not the summit. The and I went by, I tried to see what it was like, but it said it was too foggy. The the privacy issue, I don't have any issue with. I don't see how that's going to impact or be that big of a problem at all. And as I've said before, I don't know what's wrong with window shades anymore, but seems like a good solution to me. So any kind of, and I don't really think tinting windows is is a good solution. I just, I don't know, windows should be open and let the light in. That's just how I feel. And so I don't have any other issues with project at all. I I had somewhat of an issue with the project plans. I think they were difficult to look at compared to some of the plans that we've gotten. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Rizzo, your turn to opine on this project.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Well, I just like I'd like to comment firstly on on the flood issue. I mean, a part of going with the second story is allowing the the site that maintain or in this case, they increased it slightly for some of the impervious material, which is also a concern in heavy rains. So that's another good reason to 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 go with a second story on a smaller lot. I I think, you know, by it, the architect did a really good job of keeping this second story to a really, in my opinion, low height by using the massing to in to favor a lower ridge line. It's pretty amazing that that she was able to raise the to raises the 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 first floor and and also keep this within, you know, under twenty four feet. I think, you know, we when we talk about views, you know, we talk about landmark views and and Mount Tam is definitely a landmark view. I think that if 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 that view was blocked, was blocking the ridge line, I would have more of a problem with it. I was actually pleased that the neighbor at one fifty one was satisfied because I thought that they would actually have more of an impact than one forty seven. I think most of the living space, outdoor living space on on one forty seven is on the deck and and as far as congregating, it would seem like there's a obviously a backyard for the kids to play and and a dock, but it would seem that most skin entertainings done on that deck where where you have the ability to see the ridge line. And so, I mean, I I think I think that the architect did everything they could. The only thing I would say is, you know, they they already worked to drop that that roof line over over the staircase, which could have been maybe you centered a little bit more in in the house, but as long as the neighbor that is directly behind at one fifty one is satisfied with that staircase, then you know, I'd I'd say that I could I could meet the finding. So that's where I stand with with the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the sentiments. I understand what you were saying. Mr. Metcalf, your turn to.
I think the design is successful and I think that this fits the neighborhood quite well. I also would like to compliment the Parkers and their architect for drawing back the original application that, you know, you know, that was coming into the commission and working with the neighbors. I think it has created a very good situation. And that everybody is quite satisfied, whereas if they had gone ahead with the hearing, some neighbors may not have been as willing to compromise. So it was a good move and I hope it sets an example for others. I have no problem with the view of Mount Tam from one forty seven. I too thought that one fifty one would have the most impact. And if that homeowner is satisfied, I think we should be too. I'd like to go into the privacy issue a little bit. The I don't think that the commission should be involved in telling an applicant to tint windows. I don't like tinted windows, but it would be up to the applicant and the neighbor to work something out if they wished. That is not our role. And Margaret Diddy, who lives at one ten, has complained before when an addition was put in. Just looking at Phil's photos, the one from the bedroom that is three feet back, I think you took two from the bedroom. And I'm not sure which one you showed a slide of tonight, but the one that's three feet back. When you look across, you see the downstairs windows of the home at one thirteen. You can't see in those windows. You see the windows. I mean, why can the windows from one thirteen be looking into one ten? We're talking about a hundred to a hundred and twenty feet. And if Margaret Diddy is concerned, I suggest that you takes a look at the Roman shades that open from the down that are down and go up rather than being at the top of the window and going down. That's used by people, but it's her concern. She should handle it and we should not put the onus on the applicant. It's we might talk about clear story windows and things like that if it was a house to the side and there's only ten feet between them. But not when it's across the street. And as I say, I feel very strongly that this is not an issue for the commission or even the staff. I can make all the findings on this. I, as I said in the beginning, I think it's a very nice design that fits the neighborhood in which it will be, and I wish everybody good luck.
Thank you, Phyllis. Well said. For my part, I think that I would echo the sentiments of the other commissioners that the Parkers having worked with the neighbors in a very appreciated manner is important to the community and important to their success in the neighborhood. That's a that's a big point for everyone. And at the end of the day, the I hope friends for this project and able to be good neighbors. I think that the design is very well truncated from what it was originally. And that it it fits the neighborhood. I think that despite any of the concerns or statements that are in the public realm about second story additions, we're going to be raising houses over here more often than not. It's going to be happening more frequently. So it's a it's an issue that we have to accept. It's going to happen. Houses are going to be raised. And when they do that, they're going to increase the footprint of the F A R. To get value out of the house. So that's something that's coming our way. I clearly anticipate that. So that said, I can make the findings. So that said, I can make the findings for this project and I would entertain a motion for this.
Peter, I shall make the motion in the matter of design review application PL two zero two one dash zero zero five four for a six hundred and seventy eight square foot second level addition, a hundred and thirty nine square foot first level addition and modification to the existing single story home at one thirteen Golden Hind Passage. This would be resolution number twenty one dash oh one five that comes before us on this date.
Thank you. Do we have a second for this?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a vote.
With Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo? Are you muted?
Muted.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice Chair McCann?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes.
So you want to read the?
Yes, thank you. Following action by the planning commission at this public hearing. This this decision can be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days of this evening. Appeal forms are available on the town's website and there is a three hundred dollar fighting fighting fee.
Thank you very much. All right, Parkers, you are set to go. I hope that you have good luck and.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to our second new hearing of the night for project of fifteen deer run. This is a design review application. PL two one dash zero zero seven seven for a twelve hundred square foot detached accessory dwelling unit at fifteen deer run. So so this is your item also.
Thank you. And can you hear me? Yep. I just got a security alert on my computer. Let's see. Okay. Can you see my screen?
No.
No.
No. Okay, let's try this. Unfortunately, I set my. Okay, let me try this. Okay. Sorry about that. How about now?
There you go.
Great. Okay, um, this, as Chair Chase introduced, is a designer view application for a twelve hundred square foot detached ADU at fifteen deer run. The fifteen deer run is okay, fifteen deer run is a very large lot up above Meadow Suites, basically the south end of town along Highway one oh one. Be close to push to the Mill Valley border. It's above Meadow Suite and it's a private road off of Meadow Suite Drive. And the proposed site plan is shown here, which is in your packet. I'll just kind of walk through. This is the existing residence here. This is the driveway here that goes all the way down to to deer run and then to Meadow Suite. And then to the left here is the proposed twelve hundred square foot ADU, which will be accessed via path off of the west side of existing residents and bring you into to the back or at least the the southern side of the proposed ADU. The the large lot, this is kind of a, you'll see in the photos and perhaps you saw a few had attempts to visit the site. This is kind of a recessed area, flat area where the ADU is proposed. As you can see with the contours, it's it's below the level of the house. The floor, the floor plan of the ADU, it's it's a two bedroom ADU, one bedroom here with a bath. I guess you probably call this the more the master bath. And then you have a great room, living area in the center, consistent of living room, kitchen, and then a extended out eating area surrounded by by glass on the southern end of the building. And then on the western end of the building, you have the the second bedroom with a attached bathroom as well. And then leading out to the, leading out here, probably should have put point this out in the in the site plan, but but off of all both bedrooms and the living area is French doors and and opening doors and lots of glass to a covered patio area here, providing the view to the north. This is the, again, the northern elevation. Again, the bed, the two bedrooms on either side, main living area in the front and the large expansion of glass and opening doors to to access that area and take advantage of those views. The maximum height or the height of the project will be sixteen feet, which is the maximum allowed for for you. The the rear elevation or the south elevation shown here, again, with with the bathrooms on either side and then that eating area that's bumped out here and then the main entry back on the side, which leads to the the path to the main house. As I said, that the 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 center ridge is at sixteen feet and then the smaller edges are are a bit lower in terms of height. This is proposed side elevation or the elevation that that faces the closest to the main house. You have the bedroom and bath and then that eating nook punched out there. The project has a number of skylights on the roof and also is proposing solar panels for to provide energy to the home. The west elevation, more or less a mimic of of the east shown here and this one kind of highlights the that fixed covered patio off of the north elevation and in additional skylights. In terms of the project summary, again, very large lot, almost three acres. This is in in the R one A zoning district. It's also in the hillside overlay district. You don't see a lot of projects in in this areas. This is not in in Christmas Street Hill, of course, and not in Chapman Park. It's kind of in its own own area. In the left, I just highlighted the the existing numbers for the existing single family dwelling. And then on the right, I have the numbers for the the single family dwelling and the ADU combined together. We've got a grand for air ratio of four percent with the with the the house and five percent with the house and the ADU with this very large lot. Two percent lot coverage bumping up to almost four percent lot coverage. Main residence just showing that the setbacks, again, significant setbacks in all all areas. The ADU also significant setbacks compared to what is required. Front at two ninety five, rear one thirty two, west at thirty and east side at hundred and fifty. And the code, related code required setback shown in parentheses there. As I mentioned before, height is sixteen feet, code is sixteen feet. Covered covered parking currently is are there are three covered parking spaces and the applicant currently is in the process of re-converting the garage to the two car garage, which came with the house, back into a two covered parking spaces. So there would be a total of five parking spaces on the lot, two of which are covered, three are uncovered. And that that is the requirement for this project because the home is over, existing home is over four thousand square feet. The home itself needs three parking spaces, one being covered. And the ADU, because it is two bedroom ADU, requires two parking spaces. So three for the house, two for the ADU gives us a total of five, which they are proposing. Where did that come from? I have no idea. This are, these are photos of the story poles. The one upper left doing looking looking northwest, the other one looking straight west. These are taken from pretty close to the house and kind of emphasize especially this lower right emphasizes the the null, or I'm sorry, the the recessed area where the proposal is, is our existing retaining wall that's going to be redone. Again, setting set quite far in, the whole area surrounded by heavy vegetation. I do mention that there were letters of support from all of the nearest adjacent neighbors, which are are not very adjacent and quite quite a ways away. And I I point that out, the staff report the actual distance from each neighbor. So there's a two story pole views and then here's two more, one looking northeast. Here's the main house here, main house again, and another view looking looking southeast. So after, you know, evaluating all of the findings. And again, this is, I think, this is maybe the first time an ADU of twelve hundred square feet or is coming before planning commission for your review. As I mentioned in the staff report, the ADU, our ADU code requires projects that are greater than a thousand square feet, but maxed out at twelve hundred square feet. If that application comes before down, that application needs to go through designer view and be be heard by the planning commission. And that's why this twelve hundred square foot ADU is is being reviewed by this body. So with that, staff is spelled out in the staff report, staff is able to make all of the findings for the design review in terms of like privacy and view and recommends that the commission approve the attached resolution with the attached findings. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Phil. I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions for you. I'll start with you, Margaret. Do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
I don't right now. I might later.
Okay, all right. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions?
Not now.
Okay, all right. And how about you, Jim?
Yeah, I have a I have one question that and we're so far, you know, away from even maxing out a lot coverage here. But when we, is there anything in in the design guidelines for the ADUs for lot coverage at all? I mean, obviously, this doesn't apply to this job. I was just curious because I was looking at all the, you know, the standards for the ADU requirements in our town. Is is that something that that ever gets reviewed?
Yes, it does. The this project has to meet the cannot exceed the maximum lot coverage or FAR for this lot. I think I have that right. You may be thinking, Commissioner Rizzo, that if this if this ADU was eight hundred square feet.
Yes.
Then if it was quite quite small, then there are fewer restrictions and I believe that the project would not have to meet lot coverage or FAR requirements. Am I correct on that, Adam?
Well, it really relates to where it's located on the lot. So if you are encroaching into a rear yard setback or you are encroaching into a side yard setback, you are limited to an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit. But in doing so, you then, in order to get, if you're doing an eight hundred square foot ADU in those setbacks or whatnot, you're allowed to exceed FAR or lot coverage or what have you. If you are meeting the setback requirements, then you are subject to the normal lot coverage FAR requirements that essentially any structure on this lot would would be subject to. So it's just combined into the entire lot coverage for the entire lot. The ADU is, it's a little backward in a way, but it's how the state law is written essentially.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for asking, Jim. Phyllis, do you have any questions for staff on this item?
Not at this time.
All right. I don't have any questions for you. So we will look to the applicant to make presentation and I don't know whether Mr. Taylor or Mr. Turner is going to speak. Which of you will do so?
Oh, I can start. Am I on here?
Yes, you are.
Okay, well, so good evening, commissioners. My name is Henry Taylor. I'm the architect for the project at Deer Run. The applicant Eli Turner is also on the call and of course, we'd be both happy to answer questions at the appropriate time. The program envisioned for the design of this building was generated by the desire of the owners for flexible options such as rental or accommodations for use by family members in the in the future. The program called for two bedrooms, a bathroom for each and a great room slash kitchen slash eating area with generous access to the outside patios located in the front and the rear of the building. Given the flat nature of the site, the building is constructed on a flat concrete slab, allowing easy inside outside living in different weather conditions. This is a very exposed site. The porch roof on the north side of the building will provide protection from the sun and weather on this, again, very exposed site. So to the heart of the design approach, height limits constraints and the desire to break up the mass of the building were the initial and important considerations. Height limit constraints and desire to break up the mass. So by design, separating the sleeping areas and gathering spaces led to the idea of three separate and distinct mini wings, each defined by pitched roofs all under the sixteen foot height limit. This design allows for maximum roof area for solar panels as well as providing interesting interior high spaces in each of the wings. This approach also breaks up the mass and scale of the building with each wing defining its form almost as a series of separate buildings that reflect the interior function. There are plans for a rainwater collection system on site added aided by ample roof area. A gray water system is also planned. Green building techniques supplied with efficient heating and cooling, extra insulation and the like. As Phil said, there is plenty of parking on the main residence with plans for a pleasant walkway down the hill to the main entry on the south side of the building. The woo we approved exterior materials are meant to land shout lend shadow lines to the walls with grooved separations between horizontal and vertical boards. Exterior windows and doors will match color, though in fact by brand to those on the main house. You have in your packet responses from emails, neighbor emails, who, as far as I know, all of whom have seen the project plans and and approved. The only, the at forty five, I believe it's forty five deer run, that's which is about sixty or seventy feet up the hill is as far as I know, the only house that can look down on this or see a portion of this of this ADU. As far as I know, there were no negative responses to to the to the project. So Eli, I believe you're on. Love to hear from you as well. This is the app, the owner of fifteen deer run.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eli. Thanks so much for the the opportunity to be with you tonight. I apologize, my wife can't be with us tonight. This is right in the smack middle of a bedtime for our two daughters. So she is facilitating that right now. But as as Hank mentioned, the goal of this project is really to support our growing family and our desire to host friends and family as they visit. In particular, my wife's family is all from Chicago and we would love for her, my mother-in-law, to be able to visit and stay with us more comfortably for more extended periods of time. And yeah, I think Hank covered really well, sort of the design goals of, you know, our placement, our desire to make this a really green building with solar panels and rainwater collection. And yeah, would love to answer any questions if folks happen.
Okay, so that's your very succinct statement there. I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions for Taylor for you. Stick your hand up in the air, commissioners, if you have any questions for this guy. Of the Bundy.
Yeah, this is really set the high bar for a green ADU here in Corder Madera. And I compliment the architect on this and just the way it's fit into the landscape. My only question would be, it looks like you're going to need to have construction access for the building. And why had you thought about turning that construction access off the driveway into a driveway that your guests, or if it was rented in the future, they would be able to drive to to get groceries in, get luggage in, you know, get anything that was necessary in. So that's that's the only thought that I have in relationship to the project.
I can answer some, as you probably noticed, when you visited the site, there's an old sort of access road that comes up the hill to where this ADU is located. The idea right now, and that could be a possibility in the future, the idea now was to sort of not not sort of clutter the site really with 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 cars. Since there was a kind of a nice access down the hill to, you know, by pathway. It's always an option in the future, but for the moment, the idea was to kind of leave the site unfettered like by cars. Eli, you might add to that?
Yep, that's exactly right. And right now, if you're looking out, you know, sitting on where the porch area is for it, the goal is to enjoy the beautiful, you know, woods that you're looking out on as opposed to to concrete. But certainly, yeah, you make a valid point and, you know, we would consider that in the future. But but right now, the the main usage would be for family and friends that would be walking down from our main house anyway. So that's why.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have a question for the applicants? All right, seeing none. No other questions from the applicants or the applicants. Then we will take this to public comment on this item. So we have public comment to open up. And for three minutes, anyone can speak to this issue. I have a timer here. And. I see that we have a question. And perhaps Tracy, you can read that, or do you have any hands up?
No hands up, so I'll start with the question. We'll give the attendees time to raise their hands. The question was, are the story poles for the proposed ADU set to the correct height? Photos, I think they mean in the photos, and that came from an anonymous attendee. There's an item written comment in the chat that says, can we see the photos again, please? Maybe that's the same person. Let's see any hands raised, church, I'll check for email.
So. The Boyle is.
I'm happy to also answer that question about the story poles, which are, to my knowledge, and Hank, correct me if I'm wrong, but are to 16 feet and have been certified by our civil engineering company that came out to certify that, Hank.
That's correct.
That's correct. Times times three. And here are the photos of the story poles.
So the center. So we say pavilion is 16 foot and the height of the two sides pavilions is how tall? Fourteen six, I see it here, yeah.
Yeah, thirteen. Fourteen six on the far one, 13 feet on the one.
I see, gotcha.
The operative. The operative. Sixty foot is the center. Like your word pavilion, that's that's kind of what I had in mind.
Okay. All right. Have there been any other? Hands up or any other queries, Tracy?
See additional hands up. Excuse me, there is a hand up from Lynn. Lynn, go ahead, you want to go ahead?
Hi, I'm hi, Eli and Hank. I'm the neighbor to the north and am just seeing the photos for the first time. And pretty clearly see my house there and not not as I expected. It's not a problem. I'm curious whether, though, at this point, you have plans to put a fence around the, you know, a screening fence or a privacy fence on the outside area of that north. The to the north exposure.
Okay, we'll let them answer that if you are done with your speaking moment. If you have any other things to say, you still have some time left. Otherwise, we'll hold that question for them to answer.
Yeah, I mean, my, I may, after I hear the answer.
Okay, well, that's you got to ask your question. So, all right. So we'll say that you've spoken and we'll let the applicant respond to that.
Yeah, thanks so much for the question, Lynn. If you want to come by tomorrow, by all means, feel free to walk over. I would be happy to look back at the photos. I'm I can say fairly confidently that I don't think that your house is in any of these photos. I think I think it's actually like, I would say, over 300 feet away and and not actually in the direction that these photos are are facing, open to being to being corrected here. But if you want to pull the photos back up, or I don't know if there's a way to indicate where you're seeing your house. To answer your question more directly, we don't have a plan to fence this in. One of our favorite aspects of living on Deer Run is that it's very true to its name and we have lots and lots of deer. And we we love that part of it. So at the moment, we don't have fans to fence it in, but could certainly accommodate that if if there's an issue for visibility.
Okay, thank you. We will not get into a dialogue here, so we'll just hope your answers suffices for that and that you make contact with the neighbor and that you guys can work this out. Okay. Anything else popping up, Tracy?
Don't see anything in our Zoom written commentary areas or any raised hands. I'll check email very briefly. And no, no emails either.
Okay, so we're going to close public comment to this item and we'll bring it back to the commission to discuss and see what the sentiment is for this item. I'll start with you, Dr. Bundy. I have you in the center of my screen, so you start with the comment on this.
No, it's exceptionally nice ADU. I can make all the findings.
That's succinct. All right, Margaret.
I can't really agree. Um, first of all, the bigger issue to me is that it's too big. It's not an ADU. I know we said that ADUs could be up to 1,200 square feet, but I think it's a home. It's a two bedroom, two full bath house. It's not an ADU. And if one of the reasons we are encouraging or the state is encouraging ADUs is for the creation of affordable housing, this isn't the kind of building that would be affordable. If rented at the going rate for rents of a two bedroom, two bath, full bath, great home. It's just too big. And I think it sets a very, it sets a bad precedent for the purpose of ADUs in our community and for the size of ADUs in our community. And the other thing that was even mentioned in Phil's report, which I don't know why he didn't mention it now, is this, it's not harmonious with the existing building on the lot. And that was one of the things that ADUs were supposed to be is buildings that are in the same styles, genre, whatever you want to call it, with the existing building that's on the lot. There wasn't even a picture of the existing building on the lot. So Phil mentioned it in his report and said it's not harmonious, but there were no pictures or attempt to try to make it harmonious with what's already there. So I I think I'd have trouble making the findings.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Mr. Rizzo.
I too like the word pavilion. And it's nice to see, Henry, that there's still other people besides myself that can draw by hand.
Thank you.
But yeah. Anyway, I am. I think that, you know, the ADU code is is looking to to establish different sizes and 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 needs for affordable housing. So. And this lot is pretty unique in in that it will support a larger ADU to, you know, to a two bedroom house. I I think that he's done a great job of, the architect's done a great job of bringing bringing the the height of the roof down. I don't see any other structures in these photos that that are visible. It looks like it's in a little canyon. So. I mean, I I can, I personally could make the findings to to approve this project. I think that they've done a good job. And I think the lots big enough in Corder Madera are lots are so small that even if it's a different material, it's it's far enough away that from the from. You know, from the street, you could almost make the argument that it was a different lot. And it's so far below lot coverage in the FAR that, you know, I think it makes sense in this location. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Mr. Metcalfe, your comment, your thoughts?
We have a lot of thoughts on this. I guess I'm in a New York state of mind, having worked for the last two months with East Coast client. The first thing that I saw when I looked at this was I thought of Jones Beach in New York and which is open to the public. But there's certain nouveau riche people who didn't want to mix with the Hoy Peloy. So they opened a couple of private beach clubs and put up fancy overdone cabanas. This to me looks like a row of those cabanas. And I just can't see it here in Corder Madera. I don't like, as I said, I don't like the plan. I find it to be overbearing. And the product, and I cannot make findings. Let me get the right numbers. One, four, nor six. I just, as I say, it. It's just too overdone. The three. Having it look like, as I say, three cabanas in a row certainly to me is not pleasing as the description goes in the findings. That isn't the word I use. And not that I mentioned finding two, but it talks about talks about trees and natural vegetation, et cetera. But the last part of the sentence is affect the natural beauty of the town. Well, this does nothing to enhance the natural beauty of the town. So. I mean, you know, as I say, I trying to be kind, I'm not being kind on this. It just doesn't make sense. It's overpowering. And I'm trying to find some of my notes. Yeah, it talks about under four that ADUs, you know, it talks about a modest size. Well, this is a modest. Unfortunately, the state allows us to go up to 1,200 square feet. And we ought to take a look at doing something about that because we can be more restrictive than state law. And it talks about is designed to blend well with its surroundings. Nothing could possibly blend well with this. It's it's own design, its own thing. I just cannot see it here in Corder Madera. I cannot see it as an ADU. And as I say, I cannot make the findings.
Thank you, Phyllis. When I look at this, Mr. Taylor, I think that your drawing doesn't do service to the imagery that you're trying to protect here. I wish that it could be more refined in the drawing so that I it would be lay to rely the sighting and so forth in a better manner. But that said, I thought long and hard about it, and I think that your isometric drawing that you have shows actually the project at its best. So I do think that this is appropriately sized for the lot. And I think that it does fit in there. It's sort of a country set of pavilions, and I think it's quite all right. So. I personally can make the findings for this. I think that it's appropriately cited. I think that it's it's a nice set of structures out there. And I think that the imagery in the plans doesn't show, I think, what it will ultimately look like. Because I think it's much more refined than what it is in the planned elevations. If you would strive to use more line weight to define things like siding and so forth in a lighter, darker variation, it would represent, I think, what this thing might look like a little better. So I think it does have a internal sense of order. And I think it fits on the site. So that's my opinion, and I would be able to make the findings for this. So. We have apparently, I think, a three two split here at this commission level. So I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion in the matter of design review application, yell two one dash oh oh seven seven for a 1,200 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit at 15 deer run, resolution number twenty one dash oh one six.
Second.
Thank you. For both, please.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandell?
No.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
No.
Chairman Jase?
Yes.
Much impressive.
Phil?
Yes, as for this decision can be repealed, can be appealed by anyone within 10 calendar days of this evening. And applications for appeal are available at the town of Corder Madera and also on our website. And there's a $300 filing fee.
All right, Mr. Turner, Taylor, thank you very much.
Thanks to you. And thanks for your comments, all of them.
Okay.
Certainly.
All right, so what we will do then is let you guys go and we will move on to business item. And Mr. Wolf, you're going to tell us about the work plan overview of the housing element.
Peter, could we just take like a five minute break?
Certainly. Certainly. Let's come back at eight forty here if we can. Thank you. All right, great. Looks like we're back.
Okay.
So, Mr. Wolf, you have some information to impart to us.
One second here. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is this is really a informational item. You know, I I wanted to brief the planning commission on the housing element work plan and and sort of the. You know, I, I wanted to brief the planning commission on the housing element work plan and, and sort of the major undertaking that staff and our group of consultants that we've hired are going to be undertaking over the next year, fifteen months or so. And since I know some of you are familiar with the housing element and the housing element update process, others maybe not as much. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity at the beginning of the process just to talk a little bit about what the housing element is and a little bit description of what we're going to be doing over the next these fifteen months and, and sort of at least talk about the initial timeline and work plan. So just this is a, you know, I'm happy to answer questions as I go along. Feel free to just give me a little raised hand. But, but essentially the housing element is, is required, sorry, the housing element update happens every eight years as required by state law, and it really is probably most well-known for the regional housing needs allocation coming from the Association of Bay Area Governments, which every jurisdiction in the Bay Area gets a number of units that we're supposed to plan for over the next, or the eight-year planning cycle. And figure out how we're going to actually accommodate the number of units. So it's most well-known for that arena, it's called. But it also is really an opportunity for the community and for decision-makers and staff to engage in a dialogue and discussion about housing issues, housing needs, which are obviously larger than Corder Madera itself, but also are very important important will have, are very relevant to our community and how we want to address those issues locally. And so there's a lot of value to having this conversation every eight years. I, you know, I, I told the council that, you know, every 10 years might be a better fit for aligning with information coming out of the census, but so be it. Where every eight years, state law determines that, and, and there you go. It's a little bit different. So the housing element is one element of our town's comprehensive plan or the general plan. But it's, it's sort of a unique element in that it is very much regulated by state law. And there are a lot of, even more so in the last eight years, and I'll get into that. I'm sorry, in the, in the last couple of years, the state has really passed a number of laws aimed at putting more teeth in the housing element, making more strict requirements for how you go about site analysis, the ramifications if you don't adopt, and the town doesn't adopt a compliant housing element, penalties and so forth, and things like that. So it has a lot more regulatory more of a regulatory framework, so to speak, than other pieces of our general plan, which are much more, can be much more aspirational and much more open-ended as it were. So these are, the slide just shows the key components of the housing element. There's community engagement. We talked about past performance, the housing needs assessment, which has a new component that we're talking, talk about, which is really about more of an emphasis now on affirmatively furthering fair housing in our community, which means reaching out to groups that may have be underrepresented or not typically engaged in the housing process or not, don't feel comfortable engaging in towns' policy development process around housing. There's a constraints analysis chapter. What are the regulatory impediments currently prohibiting the development of new housing in Corder Madera? Housing site inventory, and this is the one that really focuses on the Rena number, which as you are, as we've talked about, is 725 units this eight-year cycle coming up. And then there's policies and programs and a list of sort of actions, programs, policies that the town is committing to undertake in the eight-year cycle to address housing needs and to be proactive about housing issues and try to address housing issues in town and, and depending on how much we want to be involved in the broader housing issues more regionally to address those as well. This is the house, cover of the housing element for the last cycle. This is the current cycle. We're in the 2015 to 2023 housing element cycle. And this was adopted in May of 2015. So as you can see, we're approaching the end of the eight-year cycle, not, you know, by 2023. And you can see basically, if you don't have a copy of this, it's on our website, happy to provide you with a hard copy if that's easier for you. But it does go through a variety of different housing needs analysis, site inventory, et cetera, et cetera. And, and frankly, a lot of the housing developments we've seen in the last eight years are included in the housing element site analysis. Tam, Tam Ridge was already under construction or approved, but the 16 units over at, on Casablanca Drive was, was essentially an opportunity site identified in the site inventory and analysis of the last housing element. Robin Drive was clearly in, in the, you know, the subdivision over there on Paradise Drive was also identified as an opportunity site. And then there's a slew of goals, policies and programs which staff has been making progress on, including things like the objective design and development standards, which, as we've talked about, have also serve the function of of, of development of design guidelines for multifamily housing. Anyways, so this really speaks, slide speaks to the new newer requirements in state law that we're going to have to really focus on this year. And over the next year and 15 months, that make this housing element much more cumbersome, I would say, and not in a bad way, but just it, it's more work for staff to really going to accomplish, in order to accomplish a, and complete a compliant housing element, it's going to take much more, much more effort on behalf of town staff. The last go-around, we had 72 units, as you can see, and then and now we're at 725, so we have 10 time increase over the last go-around. And that means we're just going to have to do a deeper dive into where potential new housing is, could be located in Corder Madera. I talked about affirmatively furthering fair housing, and this is really a part of state law and something that we're going to have to really incorporate into all aspects of the housing element process. So there's outreach, but there's also coming out of that outreach and, you know, basically depending on the input we receive, identify real meaningful actions to address fair housing issues in Corder Madera by either existing or past policies and updating those to make sure that they are not being discriminatory or not reaching and creating opportunities for others, other communities that have been disenfranchised or disen- not felt essentially comfortable in Corder Madera, moving to Corder Madera, ensuring that there's opportunities to do that, or policies and programs in place that help to accomplish those goals. There are new limits on sites which mostly affect communities that are have basically identified sites in the last go-around of the housing element that never got developed. And so reusing them, there's more restrictions on, on how you now have to basically regulate those and make them easier to develop. We actually don't have much of a problem in that regard because we, as I just mentioned, there's been development on the on the properties and sites that the towns identified in the past as an element or this current housing element. But there's also more scrutiny on sort of really the feasibility of, and the likelihood that sites that are identified by the town actually develop. So more analysis is going to have to go into screening and really proving that by the rules that we and the regulations or the, the density that we are setting for certain development sites in Corder Madera or opportunity sites is actually doing enough to facilitate or making it likely that those sites will actually develop over the next eight years. And then there's also, yeah. There's also a state law that is going to be tied to our housing element, which is really requiring us to update our safety element of the general plan along with our housing element. So as we go through this process, we're also going to be talking about the safety element and things fortunately that we've already discussed as part of our climate adaptation assessment that was approved or by the town earlier this year in May. But things related to sea level rise and evacuation routes and so on and so forth. So we've been doing a lot of work in that world already. And so it's, I, I think we're in good shape there as well, but just for your information. And, and the reason why I should start by saying ultimately why I'm going through this in detail with the planning commission is that the housing element, when we do come forward with a draft housing element update, it will be a document of many pages, not unlike the objective design standards, although more text-heavy than visual-heavy. And it will be a general plan amendment. So general plan amendments will are required to be heard at a public hearing before the planning commission, who will make a recommendation to the town council. The town council ultimately decides to adopt or modify or what have you when the housing element lands there. So the planning commission will play a significant role in this process of, of adopting the housing element and updating it. This just shows the, where the I talked about the 725 units in Rena, this speaks to the higher number of units we're going to have to plan for. It's broken into planning for a variety of different income levels in Corder Madera. So you can see the breakdown in Corder Madera. We are, a lot of our units skewed. We have to plan more for the very low income and low income categories. More so than other jurisdictions. All Marin is based with this, but it's more a result of what was a methodology that came out of A-Bag, and we discussed this during the Rena appeal process, but was, was related to an equity adjustment factor because Corder Madera is in a high resource area as determined by the state and, and A-Bag. Just going back, here's, you know, I've talked about the climate adaptation assessment. So importantly, I wanted to get to this and just make sure you're aware. We are, we are going through a, this is the general overview and the timeline. Hopefully you are aware and got your little three-by-five postcard in the mail that announced this. We sent that to everybody in town, all the residents, all the businesses. We're, we're really trying to have a robust public outreach program. We've done some focus groups with community members already. We had the first workshop on October 13. We have a website, which I'll get to in a second, that's dedicated to specifically to the housing element update. But you can see we're embarking on essentially a six-part housing, we're calling it a six-part housing element workshop series. First one was October 13. It's going to be the, the second Wednesday of every month. So it's always going to be immediately after a planning commission on Tuesday night. So tomorrow night, the second Wednesday of November is our second workshop. The first three workshops are really intended to be informative and just sharing of information, having that dialogue and discussion about, you know, what people really value and think we, where we should focus our energies and our policies and, and how we should address housing, the larger housing issues that in our region and how we should address those and ground them locally in Corder Madera. So tomorrow night, we're going to have a panel discussion with the superintendent of Loxford Corder Madera School District. We have the water efficiency manager from Marin Municipal Water District, because we know we've heard a lot of concern about drought and the ability to grow or the limited resources. And so I think Terry will be able to speak to some of that from a long-term planning perspective and what they're doing. We also have affordable housing developer, who's going to be part of that panel and associated with EAH Housing. EAH Housing manages the San Clemente Place Apartments over on the Bayside. And we have a, and also another mixed income housing developer on the call as well. So a couple of individuals we think are going to speak more from the issues of current needs. And others may help speak to sort of what we do from here and, and what's the best way to move forward and think about development of housing. But anyways, I want, that's, hopefully we get a good turnout to hear from those individuals. And we also have a, an existing conditions report at the beginning of the meeting tomorrow night. But generally, you can see, we're going to have these six workshops once a month. That's going to take us into February and March. And around that same time, we're going to be kicking off the environmental analysis. The, the most, maybe most important workshops, we're going to have three consecutive workshops starting next month in January. I'm sorry, December, January and February, really focused around the site inventory analysis and, and talking about where we should really plan for new housing development in Corder Madera. And I, I think as part of that, we intend to come to the back to the planning commission, I think, after the January workshop for a check-in and get the planning commissions, you know, have a public meeting, hear from community members, but also get any comments or feedback from the planning commission about that site inventory analysis. And because I think obviously that's going to be the most tangible and sort of part of this exercise, because we're going to be talking about real sites, real densities and locations and forms that ultimately, you know, scale of buildings in certain locations that people will react to. This is just to let you know, we did go to the council, council did approve various contracts with different consultants. We have Plan to Place, Dave Javid, who worked with us on the Temple Vista Corridor rezoning study. And so if you remember Dave from that, he's going to be helping with all the public outreach. Christina Rourke, who also helped us with the last housing element, more as a project manager. She helped us with the last, I worked with her closely on the, the last update to the housing element and has also drafted the last two climate action plans for the town, so well-known. And has done good work for us. LWC- And has done good work for us. Um L W C. Uh David Bergman from L W C is gonna be presenting tomorrow night, he's more of a housing economist, but also gonna help us with the feasibility analyses that we need to do with whether. These sites are likely to develop. Um and EMC is the environmental consultant that we'll be using. Um we are working as well with the county and using their consultant, it's the sort of a joint effort. All of us are using the county's consultants for the affirmatively furthering their housing work, and so we will be. Identifying of outreach or using them as consultants essentially to help us. Um. Determine proper outreach or how we should be doing outreach. Um um in our community. And we'll be analyzing the site inventory consistent with state law requirements. So here is, this is just the community, county what the community why mailer that went out and I wanted to briefly, let me see if I can pull up. Stop the share. If you wanna um let's see. Try to get to the website. If you haven't seen it, um this is the landing page for. Um the housing element update work that we're doing, so you can see. We're starting, we're, you know, we started with at least a a frame um and a place to land, we have. Past events, um different council meetings. That you can click on, we have uh get involved tab, obviously um comments or questions on the first page. Um. We have uh let's see, there there's an ability to select your language that sort of can be in English or Spanish. Or any other frankly, this is a Google Translate, so it's can be any language, it's kind of interesting. Uh sign up with your email if you wanna receive. Um targeted email outreach, focus just on this project. Um. An FAQ and a timeline that sort of outlines. Basic information about what a house and element is. Um talks about the different outreach, how they can stay involved, Rena, et cetera, et cetera, so. Um we're trying to um. Is upcoming workshops. Listen here, English, they're all in English and in Spanish. QR code and then we have um. Starting to fill this out with different resources as well for community members to sort of follow along with. And um. Uh the next thing we're gonna put up here is state law and and state guidance documents as well. So I mean, that's really it, I just wanted to. Let's give you, you know, um. The same amount, well, give you. Just to have a a a an agenda item, so I can help answer any questions you might have without getting into substantive. Discussion of policy right this moment and whatnot. But just let you know the work that staff is going to be doing, this is also identified as a. The top priority um along with things like fiscal sustainability and. Um disaster preparedness for the council in the next year, the twenty twenty-two. Um work plan, so uh they clearly all uh recognize sort of the importance of. Um having a robust process. And um trying to get as many people involved as possible, so I I would also appeal to our commissioners. To if you talk to others, if you um around the community, um if you, you know, out and about. You know, please. Encourage others to get involved or to read up on this, we'd love to hear input. Right now is a great time, again, the first three meetings of this workshop is really intended just to be. We're not talking about the controversial stuff, which I'm sure will happen later that, you know, in the in the new year. But we're talking, we just wanna hear from people, we want people to be a aware of what's going on. Knowledgeable of the issues, have the same baseline level of information. And uh we're, you know, staff's open for one-on-one conversations, we're open to go to your community groups. Bob, if you want us to come to Lions Club, whatever, you know, whatever it is. We're happy to do that, um and and even better if you know. Of people who normally don't attend or don't get involved in things like this, but. Do are have some concerns about housing, you know, or do are facing some issues. Um we wanna hear from them as well and see what we can do as a town to um better support our community members. With that, I'll just uh open it for questions and. Um you know, like I said, the next time we will actually probably put this on it, an agenda in front of the commission will be. Oh tentatively planned for the end of January, so at that point, we'll. Have already had a couple of discussions with the community about the site inventory. And we'll be um and where we're gonna be probably doing some rezonings of property. And we'll be coming to the commission for basically a uh. A a a check-in on that uh at that point in time, so um before we had refine and 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 come forward with a. Proposal on our rezonings.
Okay, uh Phyllis, you have your hand up, question for.
Your your.
Done that. Okay, that website looks very good and it's very clear, I think anyone looking at it will be able to understand it, which is good. I wanted to show with everybody that a group called Cost Marin. Did a webinar a couple of weeks ago, which is now on tape. And it was California's new housing laws. Truth and the consequences and it was quite a three hundred and fifty people were on it, uh I keep Martha apprised of these. Uh Mike McGuire. The state senator Mark Levin, the state assemblyman. Pat Eklund, who's the mayor of Nevada, but she's also the A bag representative for Marin. And Susan Kirsch from California Community Catalysts. And Dick Spotswood was the moderator and they discussed a lot of things. Having to do with what we will be going through with the housing element, but one interesting thing that uh Pat Eklund brought up. Being on that executive board of A bag. Uh A bag is turning down all of the Rena appeals the first time they come, it's an automatic thing. And then they will look at them each individually later. It is, sounds perfectly ridiculous, but it doesn't surprise me, but as I say, if anybody has some time, it's about. Around an hour. And as I say, it's now on YouTube and afterwards, which is interesting, the mayor of Mill Valley. Actually did a rebuttal to everything that um Mike McGuire had to say about the state. Helping us plan. But it would be informative, you know, for staff and the commissioners as we go through this to see how other people looking at this, so I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Thank you, Phyllis, yeah. Um anybody else have any question, Bob?
Uh yeah, I uh viewed the archived video of the October thirteenth meeting. And it seemed pretty reasonable, I was surprised that it didn't sound like there was as much pushback. Or people saying, you know, the state can take this regulation and shove it, uh it seemed much more reasonable than I thought it was gonna be, did I? Miss something?
You're talking about the one I'm talking about, the cost.
They go October thirteenth, the uh the one that.
Yeah, no, the first workshop, look, I, you know, I.
Oh, the workshop was good.
Yeah, we had about thirty-five to forty um attendees from the public and. Um you know, I, yeah, certainly. That meeting tomorrow night, you know, we're not, again, I think we'll we'll start to. Hear from more people, it's always the case when you start to see sort of specific sites um discussed or. Specific of plans for where development would go is where we're probably here for more people, we're trying to get everybody. In uh um into these early meetings, but but yeah, absolutely, you know, I I do think. There's a a recognition of, I mean, I hear it all the time of the high cost of housing and its impacts. Locally and one of the reasons we were hoping to have some people of. Business owners on the call, others, we're gonna have one of the local dentists actually who works in town center. Unfortunately, can't make it tomorrow night, but you know, he was talking to me about just. The impacts that it has on costs to his customers in town, um you know, the employees and and whatnot that. Um staffing issues that are are problematic because of some of the housing issues we have, but beyond that, I mean, I think. Um I think people want to understand and discuss. Uh and have room to discuss sort of um. Housing issues and the development of the town with respect to housing. In a um in in an open way, um and and so I think you're right, it was, we had a a pretty good turnout. And you know, we didn't hear a lot of sort of anti. Growth, anti-development, I think it's more um. You know, but you know, that we'll see, we we wanna see more people come out, like I said, I think. I wasn't expecting that and I, you know, I think people just wanna have a conversation about it, that's what these first few meetings are hoping to. Um allow for um allow people to understand different perspectives and and hear from each other.
So you're saying that um if let's say there's a five acre site in town that's zoned for single-family residential right now, that. We have to look at that as being open to. Multi-unit development and then we have to go into rezoning it to allow that, is that where we're headed?
Yeah, except there's no five acres, single family home site, so so but yes, I mean, the reality is, we're gonna be looking at. Um development parcels. And I, you know, I I think we all know what some of them are by looking around town and things that we've actually had proposals for that never went anywhere. Um and we're gonna look at some of these, a lot of them are commercial properties and we're gonna say, y- you know. They. Yeah, these should be, or or we're gonna have to look at the density that's allowed now and in order to make our Rena numbers that likely gonna have to be rezoned to allow for more. More housing.
Okay, so that uh takes us down the path of. Um. Probable more profit for people who are selling those parcels or who are developing those parcels than they currently are. So there won't be legal objection to those for the most part, is that fair to say?
I, well, I, you know, I.
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so, I mean, so in in one thing to note, you know, a lot of our, well, anyways, yeah, it.
I'm sorry, I I didn't.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I I hear you, I mean, you know, one of the things we're we'll have to do in that. Uh uh you know, is we know and and frankly, it's a good thing in some respects is that. Um we know a lot of these property owners around town and and are, you know, it's not like this is a. This is a discussion with property owners as well, so it's it's all, it's all around, um but. But certainly, yeah, I think in G in December, I think we're gonna have a very. Um high level and maybe a medium level conversation about where we should focus growth and development. You know, um with respect to housing, without trying to get too specific, but you know, we've all, everybody's heard different things and. Let's hear from our community, maybe somebody knows of a great opportunity and that. Or maybe one we shouldn't even consider or whatever whatever it is and we're trying to um and also just in general. Uh where, you know, where would uh make the most sense from a planning perspective with respect to. Transportation and access to amenities and things like that, so. Um. So, you know, I I'm again, it's if you have thought, you you know, I just, I just, we're gonna be talking a lot about it and. Uh communicating lines of communication are open um. Uh in in all respects, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any, go ahead, Phyllis, yeah.
Yeah, I think tomorrow night's meeting is probably one of the most important workshops. That you're gonna have because you're bringing in other people from other jurisdictions to explain with. In the ways they're constricted and stuff, and it's gonna give anybody who attends. A very clear and picture and well, a well-rounded picture of all the things that we're facing. It's not just the town talking about how we will zone certain properties, so you put together a very good workshop, I hope a lot of people attend.
Yeah, unfortunately, we just, you know, it's hoping our our business owner um would would attend and we just pulled out the last second for. Family, emergency family reasons, but um that I think that's an important perspective to give, so I'll figure out how to. Still get that uh accomplished one way or the other, but.
What about seeing if one of the managers from the two major shopping centers could come?
Uh yeah, I mean, it's.
Just so you have somebody, you know, who could talk from the business sense. Cause they they are not individual business owners, but they are dealing with business owners on a daily basis.
Yeah, I don't, I I'm. And you, yeah, I I I prefer not to, but um.
That's okay.
Yeah, we certainly will talk to the chamber and we'll we'll talk to other. Um you know, we tried to, anyways, it's just, I think we had a really good um panelist, but it it didn't work out, so we'll have to figure out another way. It's just short notice now at this point to try to pivot and get some else on board. But but um, you know, uh I'm sure we'll we'll Julie with the chamber is putting us in touch with other folks and we'll. Get that perspective. Um included in in our. Report. And.
Okay, so we'll move on, huh? To.
Yeah.
Reports, um. So uh does somebody have a report for the October nineteenth uh? Town council meeting? Was there one?
Yeah.
Okay, I was out of country, so I don't know. Anybody, no?
Bob, was that the one you were gonna do? I thought you was gonna do that, cause you traded with Margaret.
That was the which, which one was that?
October nineteenth.
October nineteenth. I do have notes from the meeting I did.
Okay.
Right, hold on a second. Sorry, guys.
I thought we covered this at the meeting that when Phyllis was the chairman.
I think we did, that's why I put it away, I put this.
We went for the minutes of those meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I kinda remember, cause I I I put this, I put the folder away, I can't find it.
Okay, good enough, so then um I covered the last meeting of the town council uh and. Whoa, Bob, I traded with him for another meeting. Um and um. That's where um. Todd uh Kudamano introduced uh Mr. Ragland as the building official. And uh that was a good introduction um starting out. Um and um. Now, the um, there was a fair amount of discussion about the recycling uh ordinance and so forth. But I don't think that there's really much to say about it. Um. Uh I think the biggest uh item on the agenda was the park and rec uh. Uh report for the survey that they did of the town. Uh that was that multi-page survey that was quite uh daunting, if anybody took it. Um the biggest item was that uh they discovered that fifty percent of the people. Who felt there was a need for something significant opted for to say that they wanted to pool more than anything else, that's no surprise, right? Um I think that that was the the biggest revelation, um I don't. Have the report with me, but the report was significant, I'm looking at it and the public swimming pool followed by bocce ball court, followed by an indoor fitness. Um class, having indoor fitness classes were the three most important things, but by far and away, the public swimming pool was the uh. Greatest need for those people who are feeling with their facilities are. greatest need for those people who are feeling with their facilities are being met less than 50%. So where does that go from here? This is the first step in the number of discussions that they're going to have. And I think that at some point it will get to wherever meeting the road where they actually talk about a pool, but that's a long ways away. This was an assessment and there's going to be more data coming out of the pipeline from the, in the upcoming month. Um, the Public Works Director is going to go buy a water truck that they badly need. They rent one now and they're going to go buy one now. Um, the redress, redistricting commission letter that Eric Beckman is going to sign is certainly redistricting is a big deal. And the districts as they're proposed are wildly misdrawn, shall we say. And that instead of having the northern Marin tied to a district to the east Salano County and so forth, the mayor is asking that it stay the way it is. Phyllis, you may have some information about that, that is pertinent. I don't
Well, for some reason, the commission was moving Jared Huffman's second district, which is Marin all the way up to the Oregon border along the coast. Taking Marin out of it and putting it into Mike Thompson's district five, which is Napa, Salano, a small piece of Sonoma. Doesn't make much sense. But they've come up with something that would probably affect us even more at the local level. And that is breaking up the Assembly District, which seems absolutely ridiculous. And they may possibly divide Marin County in half with the western part of the county going into one district and which may be part of Sonoma. And the eastern part of the district going into sharing with San Francisco, something we fought many years ago to not be a part of San Francisco because we're suburban and they're urban. They have until November 15th to come up with the final uh, districts and nobody knows what they're doing.
Let's reassure him.
I've You said I might know something. I'm telling you what I know from working with Sacramento. No one's happy.
No, no one's happy in the least. So I don't understand it, but that's above my pay grade here. So
Well, I've never understood why two Assembly Districts didn't equal one Senate District. Instead of changing boundaries and stuff like that. And I had a discussion with Jared Huffman years ago about it. And he couldn't come up with the straight answer either. They do seem to make more problems than necessary.
Okay, well, those are the facts, ma'am. And I don't know what else to say about it. So you know, it's a poor state of affairs and we have to wait for the film at 11 to see what happens. Mr. Wolf, do you have anything else you want to contribute to tonight's meeting? Oh, Bob, you have a question or a statement or something?
But just in regard to the Paradise Streets sort of reconsideration and trails along that, that Adam also was present at. Are, is the Planning Commission going to, you know, have to respond to that at all, Adam?
I think you're referring to the Paradise Drive Complete Streets Project. No, it's, it's going to stay in the Public Works and the Bike Ped Committee members have opined on it. I think we've got enough. It's, it doesn't, you know, typically that's going to be there. It's, you know, that's going to stay where in that form. But certainly there's going to be another public meeting, basically a repeat of the last one. And I think sometime early December. Actually, I know it's going to be November 30th. It's going to be right before our next Planning Commission meeting, actually. So if you're interested in that project, it is a, it is a very interesting and important project out of Paradise Drive. And I know some commissioners who have been involved in the school projects, the Robin Drive thing, you know, sea level rise, it, 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 it it has a lot of the queuing issues. It has a lot of all that wrapped into one street project. So it's, it's quite a
Solving the problem with the schools.
Yeah, well, it's, there's a lot of things to solve for. So how you do that is going to be very challenging. And, and that's why I think RJ smartly is, you know, doing like a three-part public workshop and, and basically bringing this along with public in, input about what priorities really should be. So
And that will be in the afternoon.
At five o'clock.
And our meeting will be at seven.
It's like 5:30 to, it's actually 5:30 to seven, and then we'll start at seven and could do our thing.
Okay.
All right.
So that's a good point. So my report would be, remember next meeting, November 30th? Not the Thanksgiving, we're canceling the meeting Thanksgiving week, obviously. Happy Thanksgiving, by the way. I hope everyone had a good one. Wish we could, yeah.
So the, the 23rd is not the meeting.
Correct. Yeah, we're canceling that meeting. But we will have November 30th in its place. So just pushing it a week later.
We're not canceling it, we're just changing the date.
Correct. Well, yeah, yeah. The objective design and development standards will be going to the council for first reading of the ordinance next Tuesday. So be aware of that. Another ordinance extending the temporary outdoor use program related to business, businesses or impacts to businesses as a result of COVID-19. That is going to be heard as well on the 19th, I'm sorry, November 16th at the town council. And the proposal is to extend that one more year or until December 31st of next year. And the other thing you may want to peek at on the agenda for next Tuesday with the council is their strategic planning summary and confirmation of the strategic planning workshop results or priorities of the council for 2022. So that is going to be reviewed with the council next Tuesday. And obviously they're fully aware of the housing element theme, as, as I mentioned, significant project driven to land use. But there are some other items as well that they're interested in. Commissioner Mendel, we are, you know, as I, I think we've talked in the past, short-term rentals is on that work plan as well. And, and we have a consultant lined up to start to do some analysis on that item. And at least start to come back to with the, some public workshops and talk about some potential options with the community. So that's, that will be done in 2022 as well. So I know that's been a concern of, of you commissioner, both Vendell and that cap in the past. So that's, and then there's some other, there's some other items that may be worthwhile to look at, or I can review it with you.
Isn't that meeting, the next council meeting, the one where they change the officers for the next year?
Not yet. I think the first meeting in December. So count next Tuesday will be the November 16th meeting.
Yeah, I, I thought Todd had said it was going to be one of the November meetings when they would rotate the officers.
I'm pretty sure
The mayor and vice mayor.
I think we're going to do it the first meeting in December. And I don't know, very excited to have Chris on board. So that I'll just end with that. And he's very excited about the things ahead of us for, with the building department. So, and and planning and as it relates to planning as well. So with that, I will end and hope to see you tomorrow night.
Thank you. We have one more bit of business to address. And that is that the minutes for October 12th need to be addressed. And I believe that Commissioner Metcalfe, if somebody may have some alterations to those.
Uh, yes, I, I mentioned it to Adam. Just wanted you to know that item one B with the Pledge of Allegiance, something which we are not doing during the Zoom meetings. But it does say the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Chase. And not only has he not been leading them, he wasn't leading them from out, leading it last time from out of the country. So be sure that's removed and doesn't show up until we're finally having meetings in person again.
We won't ask when that will be. So does somebody want to make a motion to approve the amendments amended?
Move to approve is amended.
Okay.
All on paper?
Aye.
Okay. With that said, we can close out this meeting. And Tracy, you can take us out of the public realm.
Right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.